Good evening and welcome to the April 5th, 2023 City Council Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Here.
Councilmember Elverd.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Here.
Thank you.
I want to ask Norm Woods if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 5th, City of Roseville Regular City Council Meeting. If you're present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, they are available at the end of the staff table to your right. As a reminder, the Brown Act prohibits our city council from taking action or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For public comment, each speaker will be given three minutes at the podium on non-agendized items. The maximum allotted time for this section of our meeting is 25 minutes. Speakers that would like to comment on agendized items, those that are printed on tonight's agenda, will have five minutes to express their comments and concerns to the entire city council. Time will be monitored, and once the red light blinks at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if you address the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for your civic participation tonight and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you very much, Carmen. We'll start as we always start with public comments. These are public comments on non-agenda items, and we have two speaker cards. Norm Woods.
I've got to be going first. It's out of the way. Thank you, guys, for letting me speak here tonight. I've contacted some of you, most of you, via email. Some of you know what my cause is and what I'm here talking about, some of you don't. Dom, thank you for your email initiative. That meant a lot to me, more than you think, and Richard, yours too, meant a lot as well. I have a QR code that kind of talks about my story, my son's story, a little bit more for you guys. I don't know if you guys could take them, I know you can't comment on them tonight, but support all you guys 100%. Nothing negative like that, but I'm up here to speak for my son. Try not to get emotional. He was attacked at Ike Middle School, just walking the class, and it was recorded. It was a TikTok challenge. I've pressed charges. My wife has pressed charges as well. And had a rally in front of school. I invited some of you. I invited the chief of police and invited some other people. Didn't expect anyone to come out. What I'm pleading for right now is just leadership on it. I don't have a platform. I don't have an agenda, not trying to win on anything, just speaking up for my son. And, you know, the way, the nature in which he was attacked and the way it was recorded is just, you know, it's horrible. I've had a lot of parents contact me at the rally, and I'll be talking at the Roseville School District meeting later on. And I know that you guys don't necessarily have the oversight of the school districts, but I just know, I know that someone here has a tremendous platform and someone can speak up on something and has a much bigger voice than just a dad who's going around and speaking up for other people. So I'm up here speaking for my son. My wife's here and my other son's here, and I hope that you guys will see my story, take my QR code and look at it and reach out. And going to plan a race later on this year, a 5K and one-mile walk to bring attention to kids who've been attacked at school and for bullying issues at our Roseville School District. I'm a resident here, love this city. I know we can do better, and I know that if we have strong leadership on it, that we can do it, that we can move it across. The fact that my son was attacked and there was a three-day suspension and my son had to try and go back to that same school, that same kid there, while he was in a wheelchair, he had a dislocated hip, and I hope that you guys will look at my QR code. And that's pretty much it. I don't want to get into the weeds of anything right here. I know no one can respond to it. And most of you I follow on LinkedIn or I've met or somewhere along the road, and nothing negative to say about anything. And just looking for partners and looking for leadership and for someone with a bigger platform and who can actually really make change happen to help me move this ball forward, so that's all I have to say.
Norm, would you give Ryan those pieces of paper and then he'll get them to us?
Thank you, guys.
No, thank you very much. Next, Teresa Jiminyani. Did I get it? All right.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Teresa Jiminyani at Livet 708 Garcia Avenue. Born and raised in this town, my parents were. I've tried to move away twice and I've come back. So, and I was an employee of the City of Roseville, and I care a lot about this city and how we spend our money. I know that the times are changing and people's preferences are changing. One of the things I was surprised to learn a few years ago is that the golf courses are no longer an enterprise fund. By making them not an enterprise fund, they are not forced to pay for themselves. In the current 23 budget, it's over $600,000 of general fund money is budgeted to pay towards the golf courses because they cannot pay their own way. I know intimately that in the past, Diamond Oaks made enough money to pay for the debt on Wood Creek Oaks. Wood Creek Oaks never paid its debt. It relied on Diamond Oaks to pay its debt, and that's still the case. I did do some research and looked at the CAFER that was filed, I'm sorry, the single audit that was filed and the CAFER in June of '30, 2022, and at that time, the golf course fund had a negative funded balance of $2.4 million. I haven't seen any, of course, draft budgets yet. You'll be seeing them soon. I would hope that we would consider doing something about the golf course and potentially closing Wood Creek. I do not want to fund the golf courses out of the general fund. I can think of better things to do with $600,000. I'd like to see us get another police officer to manage traffic in the city. I'm tired of getting run over by people who speed. But I think there's a lot more things we could do with our general fund money than pay for Wood Creek Oaks Golf Course in particular. Diamond Oaks has always paid its way and is a very popular course with members of the community. If we don't have enough members to use Wood Creek Oaks, then maybe we should do something else with it. It could be a green space. You could have housing on part of it, a park on part of it, and leave part of it as a green space. You have access to reclaimed water there already, so there's a lot you can do with it. It's a valuable asset that could be sold. If it was sold to someone who could run it at a profit, that would be great, but we're not running it at a profit. We're running it at a loss, and I appreciate your consideration that at this budget and potentially future budgets, we do something about that so that we are not paying for it out of the general fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Excuse my tardiness. I am here to actually, my name is Lauren Meeks Harris, and I am here to speak on a lighter note. And my hope is that whatever has gone before us will be resolved long-term. But I'm here to speak about Organ Donation Month. I will make it brief. April is donation, Organ Donation Month. As a two-time kidney transplant recipient, I would like to say thank you to everybody who may not be in this room, who may later watch the city council meeting, but I would like to just say thank you for signing up to be an organ donor. Currently, there are 20,000 individuals waiting in the state of California. 78% of those make up a person of color, which includes the Asian, Hispanic, and Black communities. So I urge you, if you are not an organ donor, to please become one.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, one last call for anybody, public comment on non-agenda items. Going once, going three times, okay, we're done. All right, we'll move on now to our consent calendar and ask the clerk to announce the procedures for the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, the staff, or a member of the public requests that an item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, we have had no requests from council. However, we did receive a request to pull item 6.7 to be removed from consent calendar tonight and be continued to the April 19th city council meeting. There are no further requests from staff. At this time, I'd like to ask if any member of the public would like to pull an item for further discussion. Mr. Mayor, seeing none, tonight for council consideration on the consent calendar, we have items 6.1 to 6.6, items 6.8 through 6.25, with item 6.7 being continued to the April 19th city council meeting. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Sound moved?
A motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernice Coney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Thanks very much. All right, now we will move to ordinances, and before us is item 7.1, Environmental Utilities, Fiscal Year 2022-23, Interfund Transfers and Budget Adjustment. We'll have your staff report now.
Good evening, Mayor Haldeshelt and members of the council. Just kind of waiting for the transition to take place. I was trying to slow walk my way up here.
There's an unfamiliar face here.
Well, you'll get to know him in the years to come. I'm Rich Plecker. I'm your Environmental Utilities Director. With me this evening is Brian Craighead, our Waste Services Manager. Recently, you might have heard or seen from him in the Fleet Division. Interesting story, I'll save some for some other time, but Waste Services and Fleet Management have a lot in common. Let's just leave it at that. Anyhow, this evening, we're here today to discuss requested or proposed interfund transfer for the year-ending fiscal '23. We're going to talk, seek your approval for doing what we normally do as a pre-routine matter, but really take a moment to talk about the why behind what we're doing. We do this all the time, but in terms of an overview, a little bit of basics. This is Utility 101, Interfund Transfers. Dennis Kaufman, our CFO, can give you a much more lengthy and much more precise presentation on fund transfers. A little bit of a summary on the transfer requested this evening, and then the why part is the example of how we use interfund transfers to prepare ourselves for the future. So with that brief overview, we'll start. Basic picture right here on the blue bar, you see, well, there's a fund, there's two funds. The blue bar is the picture of revenue. The orange bar, as at least it turns out in this, is the expenses, and this is any given utility fund. And on purpose, we typically, revenue and expenses, revenue exceeds expenses. In this presentation, I'm going to call that a carryover. There are a number of different words for it, but those are revenues that are in excess of your expenditures. We're doing this, we're requesting this across three different funds this evening, water, wastewater, and solid waste. But for the purposes of discussion, I'll just explain what we're doing here. So that carryover is something that is important to us from an EU standpoint. It's important to the city and it's an important fiscal management tool. Recall that EU forecasts revenues and expenses on a 10-year cycle. So we look into the future, try to do our best guess at looking into the future. We look at revenues, expenses, rates, and carryover from year to year. So this is not money that just sort of fell from heaven, if you will. Sometimes you can have unrealized revenue increases or decreases because conditions change, but we program and forecast this into the future. Carryovers are really required in modern utility practice for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, it's really good business practice, it's probably pretty good practice in your own personal life. Your own expenditure shouldn't exceed what your income is. It's also a charter requirement for the City of Roseville. Remember when 2020, we went through this process? You read some of that. Utilities are required to fund themselves and reimburse the general fund with any costs that we impose upon the general fund. So it's baked into our very existence as an organization. Oftentimes, there are bond covenants which require revenues to be collected in excess of expenses. We don't use a lot of debt in EU. We do on the wastewater side to fund some of those facilities. Oftentimes, your bond coverage ratios, as it's called, is somewhere between 110% to 150% of your revenues. So that, it depends on what your credit rating is. The better your coverage is, the better your credit rating. We have a very good credit rating, so that's why that's an important thing. The next point is, is we use that to maintain reserves. Like any good, modern utility operation, we carry healthy reserves, and that's in the event of unforeseen conditions. If we have a massive hit to the revenue stream or we have a massive catastrophe, we have a certain amount of our revenue pledged and in a savings account to take care of what comes up, what comes along the way. So we satisfy those four bullets pretty regularly on any given fiscal basis. It's not really that big of a deal. We monitor it, we watch it. It's attendant to what we're doing in terms of rate cases, but it's not that hard of a lift. The next thing I'll talk about is the money that's excess to expenditures in any given year. This is how we fund our system rehabilitation replacement costs. One of the things you'll hear from us all the time, and I think something that really differentiates the City of Roseville from a lot of other utilities, is that we self-fund rehab and replacement costs from using cash, and we don't accrue debt on that. And that's, in my 36-year career, we're the only organization that I've ever seen that actually is capable of doing that. And that's mainly because of the foresight of those who came before us. They set us on a very strong path financially, and they've required us, through good management and good policies, to continue that into the future. And so as I sit here today, my job is to make sure I don't screw that up. We've been able to take care of system needs, replacement needs, using cash, and not incur the costs of interest and fees and all the other things that you essentially wind up paying double for the cash into the future. So that's very important. We do that every single year. And lastly, we do this to save for future needs because, as we've talked about in different occasions, it seems that there's always something out there that we need to prepare for next. That's what Brian's here for this evening, is to talk about one of those things that's coming next. But that just kind of gives you a big picture of why we do this, and it is routine. But I do want to, I think it's important, and it's important for people to understand this. And then lastly, I wouldn't be completely, and formal transfers are necessary to keep the books clean. Dennis likes to run a tidy ship. We have accumulated excess reserves over about the last three years since the pandemic. We've had some swings in revenue streams. We've been hesitant to move money, like in this case, I will call it moving money from the checking account to the savings account, because we really, in some instances, haven't known how revenues or costs were going to be impacted starting about three years ago with the onset of the pandemic. So with that, the next slide, this summarizes what's in your staff packet. These numbers are large, admittedly. You have to recall that we are a large utility. It's a big business, so we accumulate money and save that up over a period of three fiscal years. By way of magnitude, I'll tell you that $15 million that we're moving to rehab this time, we've saved that money up over about three years. That's on par with the Hillcrest project that we just did downtown off Douglas Avenue. That project was about $13 million. So that's how we do these projects. The next project that's slated of large magnitude like this, Crest Haven area. Going to do the same thing, all new water lines, all new fire hydrants, everything's brought up to date. All the streets are put back together again. Everything's done, and we don't have to worry about it again for at least 20, 50, hopefully 100 years. So that's kind of the magic of what we're doing, although it's not really magic. You'll see other components in terms of contributions, that's fleet replacement. So we're taking that extra money out of the checking account, putting it in savings account. In this case, by the utilities, two different savings accounts. One would be rehab and replacement, the other one is vehicle replacement. So with that, this is a summary of that, and I won't go through the table. It's all laid out right here, chapter and verse, but that gives you a big picture of what we're up to. Now we're going to talk to you about why we think this is a good idea. So with that, Brian.
Thanks, Rich. So as Rich said, we're saving for the future. A big part of that is the Advanced Clean Fleets Regulation. So what that is, is it's a proposed regulation through the California Air Resources Board, and what it does is requires fleets of medium and heavy-duty vehicles to transition to zero-emission vehicles. And it applies to fleets that are owned or leased by public and private entities, including government agencies and businesses. So it affects pretty much all fleets in the state. So starting out, what is a zero-emission vehicle? It's a vehicle which produces no emissions from the onboard source of power. So your two options are a battery-electric vehicle and a hydrogen fuel cell vehicle. By now, battery-electric vehicles have been out for quite some time. We're all used to seeing them, getting comfortable with them. There are some hydrogen fuel cell vehicles out there. However, there's not as many available, and that technology's not as far along yet. It's important to note that hybrid vehicles do not qualify under this regulation. They wouldn't be allowed, so anything with a combustion engine would not be allowed under this regulation. So there's three main compliance groups in this regulation, depending on what type of fleet you are. State and local government fleets, high-priority fleets, and drayage trucks. Essentially, they all have different compliance timelines, but what they do all include is a transition to 100% zero-emission vehicles, and it applies to all vehicles over 8,500 pounds gross vehicle weight rating. So for context, that's a 3/4-ton truck and up, so a Ford F250 and above, all of those would be required to be zero emission. So a pretty good-sized portion of our fleet. The timeline we're looking at, again, this is a proposed regulation. CARB has their next board hearing on April 27th, and we are expecting it to get approved on that date. Could carry in the 28th, but at that board hearing, we're expecting approval, which would mean implementation would start next year, 2024. So we fall under the state and local government requirements, and what that is, is a purchase requirement, essentially mandating that 50% of our truck purchases, starting January 1st of 2024, must be zero emission, and it moves to 100% in three short years later, in 2027. So the silver lining to this regulation and where we fall in the state and local government requirements is there's no requirement to retire vehicles. So we maintain some operational flexibility on what can we do now to prepare ourselves and, you know, into the future and let technology catch up and costs come down and things like that. So we've been pretty active in outreach in the rulemaking process of this regulation, mainly because this very regulation threatens our existing investments, mainly the Energy Recovery Project. So what that is, is an expansion at the Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant. We added anaerobic digester, the byproduct of which produces biomethane. That biomethane, the highest and best use for it is to use it as a transportation fuel. So we looked at our fleet, and it partnered very well with the Waste Services Collection Fleet. So that biomethane is scrubbed, cleaned, compressed, and we use it to fuel the solid waste collection vehicles. The nice thing is, it's cheaper and cleaner than diesel. It's also a big part of our compliance pathway for Senate Bill 1383. That's the organics requirement, specifically the procurement side of that requirement. It ties in nicely with that. So it's a substantial investment we made in the Energy Recovery Project. It also threatens other existing capital investments, such as all the CNG infrastructure that we've had to install to fuel these trucks. You know, this isn't just pipeline, natural gas, or gas coming out of a digester. There's quite a few stages that you have to compress it up to, you know, 4,200 PSI to put it in the trucks and use it as a transportation fuel. Also, because it's a gaseous fuel, unlike our liquid fuels, gas and diesel, you have to have a retrofit maintenance facility in order to be able to work on those. So it wasn't just one part of this, there was many different areas and investments we made going down this path. Some more concerns we have are the compliance deadlines. They're highly aggressive, a little over six months, and 50% of all of our purchases need to be zero emission. That's quite a tall order. Cost and availability on the power side of things, on a statewide scale, we're, you know, we have some concerns on where all this power is going to come to charge all these vehicles. Again, this affects pretty much every fleet in the state, so all those medium and heavy-duty vehicles are going to need to charge. Also, the infrastructure, again, 50% of purchases starting next year. So you can imagine that we're going to ramp up in the electric vehicle usage in the state. So the infrastructure needed to support all those vehicles, we foresee some availability concerns there. On the vehicle side of things, pretty big concerns with cost. What we're seeing right now is about an 85% to 100% price premium on the cost of these vehicles. What's even more concerning is they're not necessarily a one-to-one replacement ratio. Battery-electric garbage truck, for example, can do about half a route as a diesel or CNG trucks. So not only do they cost double, but we have to buy two of them in order to do business how we are today. Also, the availability side of things. A lot of these vehicles, again, this is 8,500 pounds gross vehicle weight rating and up. So these aren't the passenger sedans that we see on the road today or the light-duty trucks that are starting to become available. These are battery-electric garbage trucks, dump trucks, bucket trucks, all of those work trucks that you see in the city fleet. There's not a lot available out there right now. The ones that are are kind of in prototype stage or pre-production. There are a few that are There are a few that are out there. Again, they don't meet that duty cycle. And, and you're not required to buy them yet, and it's, it's quite a long lead time. Once everyone's required to buy them, we foresee a huge backlog of, of ordering there. So, the, the zero-emission vehicles are not perfected at the commercial scale, both for the duty cycle and the support side of things. And as we talked about it, it threatens our, our investment in the Energy Recovery Project. So, our near-term strategy, what we've done, as I said, we've had a pretty substantial outreach campaign. We've met with almost every single CARB board member and staff. We've had about 14 meetings to date. We've also submitted five letters, with another one coming hopefully by the end of this week, to CARB on the record throughout the rulemaking process, mainly to air our specific concerns with the Energy Recovery Project. We have a pretty unique story here in Roseville with our closed-loop circular economy. We're, we're reusing a methane that would otherwise just vent to the atmosphere. We're using that for its highest and best use in the transportation field. So, throughout this rulemaking process, we've really worked hard to try and get CARB to see what we're doing and allow us to continue with that, because the biomethane that we're using is actually cleaner than grid electricity and cleaner, obviously much cleaner than diesel. So, we, we think we have a pretty good story to tell, and we, we've told it to everyone that can listen. But we're going to continue advocating for practical implementation. We're also going to pre-purchase as many CNG vehicles as we can before this regulation takes into effect. That's going to allow us to continue to operate at the lowest cost to our rate payers that we can. It's also going to allow those vehicle technologies to catch up, and hopefully those prices to come down. We're really looking for parity with, you know, combustion vehicles. And then, we're going to continue planning and saving for the vehicles themselves when we do have to buy them, and then the infrastructure needed to support them. So, in summary, what we're talking about is the Advanced Clean Fleets Regulation. CARB's set to vote on it April 27th of this month, which would mean 50% of purchases of vehicles 8,500 pounds and up must be zero-emissioned by 20, January 1st, 2024, moves to 100% in 2027. And in short, this regulation will result in serious financial impacts to the City of Roseville. So, with that, I thank you and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Just a comment. You know, even if we wanted to, you, you can't get these vehicles. I mean, I know other utilities have been, you know, they've had a list of, the large vehicles, much less the fact that they don't work as well as what we have now, or you have to have two to replace for one. So, it just doesn't, it's like, it's not magic. You can't make things that aren't there yet. Absolutely.
Mayor Haldeschild, and I had the pleasure or displeasure, however you want to look at it, of being briefed on this monthly all last year, as these bills and regulations were grinding closer and closer to implementation. And now that it's among us, it's disappointing that our state leaders, you know, thought to put this in place without a lot of the foresight of how it was going to be achievable by cities, not only our size, but larger municipalities, which will have more of a challenge than what was described here this evening. So, I want to thank your team and the rest of the team that are working on this for advancing your lobbying and your, your efforts to, you know, figure out how we navigate this. I mean, these numbers are, those numbers don't look real good, you know, as far as the stats for us. But I'm really, really excited on, on the presentation. You guys did a good job on that, and I'm glad that we're hopefully making some progress on that. So, thank you.
Councilman Albert?
And so, just to summarize what you're telling us, we're, we've got extra funding, which is a good practice to have, but because of these regulations coming up and some rehab stuff coming as well, we're going to take some of the funding out and put it towards these vehicles, because if we purchase them ahead of time, it'll, it'll help, help us a whole lot, especially in the, the natural gas thing. So, I, I think that's a brilliant idea, and trying to work with the regulations that... Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. And I think, you know, Mr. Plecker, in your first slide, you know, you showed revenue exceeded expenses, and you mentioned the good practice. You know, we were trying to budget for something, and then, and then life got in the way, or, you know, interceded. We didn't, we budget conservatively, correct?
That's correct.
And what happened in 2020, 2021, was there were higher usage.
There were higher uses, and that resulted in higher revenue streams than we had predicted. And I'll tell you, coming out of the pandemic, some of that's changed. So, the time, a lot of the time-honored models for how, you know, how much water do people use, that was pretty straightforward until that. Now, we've got a different mixture of people that are working from home, or working from home from some days. So, it'll, it'll be a number of years sort of before that settles out. So, that was a little bit why we were hesitant on moving some of this around. But, but this year, we, we needed to clean that up. Plus, we saw in forecasting that, you know, it looks like a lot of money, and I made that point before, that it is a lot of money. Utilities are an expensive business. But when you look at the size and the magnitude of the mountain that lies before us in this Advanced Clean Fleet Initiative, the $15 million I referenced before will, will be a drop in the bucket compared to what we're looking at into the future. So, that's why we do that. That's exactly, we at least try to analogy, analogy could be like trying to get a running start rather than standing still at the base of the mountain trying to climb it. But let's be clear, on this issue, EU is, we've been sort of on the forefront of this, mainly because I think we're a practically-driven department. I mean, we're, we're in the most practical business perhaps in the whole city. But, you know, we've been trying to work through this, and it, it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And, and, and I understand the goals of what we're trying to accomplish, but it might not be possible. So, the one thing that we do need to do is to be able to stockpile, if you will. You may see some advanced vehicle purchases coming next year in an out-of-cycle budget request, things of that nature, in order to kind of get, get, get ahead on this.
Yeah. I just wanted to make the point that our, you know, we use state-of-the-art economic forecasts.
We do.
And sometimes, you know, like last year, inflation intervened. So, you end up with, you know, you can't, you can't put a variable into the forecast to anticipate something you don't know is not going to happen. So, these revenues are not a result of, you know, not, not good forecasting. So, I just, just wanted to make sure that was clear. All right, well, we'll open up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? And we'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the council, see if there are any additional questions regarding the presentation, or any additional comments.
Hearing non-seen, now I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.1, the City Council will consider adopting ordinance number 6634, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be, to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And next, we're going to have a public hearing. And the important thing to do here is to make sure that I open the public hearing. All right? And so, we're going to talk about municipal code, amendments in electric utility, and we'll have a present, presentation by Joanna Cucci.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am here this evening to discuss updates to the municipal code related to the electric The text of the municipal code is updated periodically for errors, emissions, or changes. We are recommending the following changes to the municipal code this year. We are recommending language cleanup due to a structural realignment of the customer care division from finance department to the electric department, an update to the electrical, electric vehicle charging rate for city-owned EV chargers, an update to billing, to the billing and metering air bill corrections policy, the addition of dusk-to-dawn and flat rates to the municipal code, and then other minor changes to reflect current practices and policies. The first major item I'm here going to discuss today is the movement of the customer care division from the finance department to the electric department. The changes related to this, to this change in the municipal code consist of just changing the department that reviews and approves changes in, for the customer care division. So, basically, we changed it from finance director to electric utility director. That's basically the change that happens throughout the code for this, this realignment. The second change is to the electric vehicle rate for utility-owned EV chargers. Currently, the city-owned vehicle chargers charge customers $0.30 per KWH. This rate was designed to recover the fixed energy and demand costs and the purchase, installation, and maintenance of the charger equipment. The electric department is recommending lowering the rate to $0.15 per KWH to recover the fixed energy and demand costs of the energy used, but not include the installation, maintenance, and purchase of the equipment. That installation, maintenance, and purchase is now being funded with LCFS, so Low Carbon Fuel Standard Auction proceeds, and these are non-rate payer funds, and so they don't need to be recollected through a rate. So, it would basically be lowering the electric vehicle rate for city-owned chargers from $0.30 to $0.15. The next update is to the bill correction policy. If there's an error on a utility bill, a correction is issued, but is restricted to 12 months if it is in favor of the customer and 6 months if it is in favor of the utility. The electric department is proposing to change this to 12 months if in favor of the customer and also 12 months if in favor of the utility. Roseville surveyed other utilities and found that they use an equal number of months in favor of both the customer and the utility. The most common policy for other utilities is also 12 months. The next change is to the dusk-to-dawn and flat rates. This rate class is a class of customers that's un-metered, and it's basically lights throughout the city that don't have meters. They come on when it gets dark, they go off when it, when it gets light in the morning. The change adds the calculated dusk-to-dawn and flat rates to municipal code. The utility has offered these rates for many years, but they were never specified in the municipal code. Previously, the code read that these would be charged based on engineering estimates that were used to calculate the rates. We are just adding those calculation, calculated rates to municipal code here. We aren't actually changing any of these rates. The customers will be charged the exact same thing they are charged today. We're just making sure that it's in the municipal code so that it aligns with how we adopt other rates. So, this basically puts these rates in alignment with the remainder of our rates. And then finally, these are the minor changes made to the code. These all relate to the customer care or utility billing division. There's an update to the payment processing that changes some language and removes some outdated processes that no longer occur. We have the removal of the limitation of service provision. This is not a service or a option that is used in the utility anymore. And removing the combined bill provision, our current billing system does not allow for combined bills. So, these changes align the municipal code with current practices within the customer care division. This item was heard by the Roseville Public Utilities Commission in November, and they unanimously recommended approval. So, the utility recommends that we introduce for first reading an ordinance approving the proposed municipal code update to reflect the updated rates, policy, and organizational realignment of the electric department.
Thank you for your presentation. Councilman Albert, do you have any questions?
I was curious for the, when we have a, an billing issue and it's in favor of the city, and so, we would now change it to be a year, we can go back and collect for a year of...
Yes.
Mistakes. How often does that occur? How often have we had those kind of situations?
It's not very often, and it's normally not like the whole bill is wrong, but like a small piece of the bill, so they aren't huge changes typically.
So, a customer's not going to...
No, there shouldn't be a point at which that it becomes a burden. And we do, if there is a burden, then there's always discussion to be had and payment plans and other options offered.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rucucci?
No, that was fine. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you for your presentation.
And I might need to have the city manager or the acting city attorney weigh in on this. When you, when you change the customer care division, you move it from finance to the electric department, all department heads have the fiduciary responsibility, or, you know, you know where I'm driving at, right? You always think that finance is going to really be looking at it versus other department heads, which of course, you know, have budgetary responsibility, right? So, I guess I'm just really, you know, I'm just kind of trying to get clarification.
I mean, I can weigh in. From a legal standpoint, the obligation of the utility director versus the obligation of the finance director is the same from that fiduciary standpoint, to manage funds appropriately, et cetera. So, it doesn't matter which department it's at. That's going to be universal across.
Okay. And then, with the dusk-to-dawn, you know, reading these staff packages, you learn so much about how great our organization is and how multifaceted it is. So, is that just on municipal poles? Or if you're, if a private property has a parking lot and a shopping center, and their lights switch on like that, does that rate apply there as well?
So, these are very old lights throughout the city. They're basically leftover from 20 years ago or more. And they just are on poles. It could be on private property. It could be like a Caltrans on-ramp. We have 72. We have 72 of these dusk-to-dawn lights throughout the entire city that are still just old and hanging out there. And they, they get charged based on the bulb size. So, whatever bulb size they take, we just calculate the wattage, basically, of that by the number of hours of darkness, and that creates the rate.
Can you dim the one that's shining into my house?
I can't, but if it's a city one, you can request a shield.
All right. Enough of my questions. Let's open it to the public. Any public comments? Seeing now, I'll close public comment, and I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to you and see if the council has anything else. And I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
On item 8.1, the City Council will consider introducing for a first reading an ordinance amending sections 14.04.010, 14.04.030, 14.04.045, 14.04.065, 14.04.080, and 14.04.090. And also deleting sections 14.04.071 of chapter 14.04 of Title IV of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding utility customer billing, accounting, and collections, and amending sections 14.24.055, 14.24.077, 14.24.195, and 14.24.210. And also deleting sections 14.24.030 of chapter 14.24 of Title IV of the Roseville Municipal Code. This is regarding the electrical energy. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeschild. Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll go to council reports, and, and first of all, we'll ask our city manager if he has anything else this evening.
No further reports, Mayor. I was going to say the, the acting city attorney had one, but I figured I'd let it, I'd leave him alone.
Acting city attorney?
No reports.
No reports. Okay. Well, I'll ask the council, then. We'll start with Councilwoman Rucucci.
Thank you. I think we've had a lot of activity in the last week, and we'll continue to be having activities in our community, and many of us went to the same ones. I've just picked two of them. One is the Kaiser groundbreaking that we went to. This is Kaiser off of Douglas Boulevard where the hospital is, and you, they're going to be, well, you see the ground has already been moved for another parking structure, and they're also going to enlarge their emergency room, intensive care, operating rooms, and another tower of, of regular patient beds. So, this, and an outpatient pharmacy also, for outpatient pharmacies. So, they're making some real large advancements for the community, both in healthcare and jobs for our community. Also, what happened here in, in Roseville at Santucci Center, there was a groundbreaking for, it's going to be a mental, like Placer County Mental Health Facility. It'll be for the inmates that are in, in jail now, and they can't be, they can't go to trial because they're not, they're incapacitated, to receive mental health care and actually help them to go through the process and, and, and be able to get out of jail, but go through being charged for what, you know, crimes that they've committed. Also, this, again, this is with the inmates. They're going to have a vocational program for them. It's for teaching them different skills. This is mid, mid-level inmates of vocational programs that they're going to have there. Again, the problem sometimes is when people get out of jail, they don't have any plans. Again, the problem sometimes is when people get out of jail, they don't have any plans, and this is for the ones who are looking and would like to learn a skill. A lot of them is culinary skills, and they mentioned others too, that there's going to be an opportunity there on site before they leave jail, they'll have, they'll have training. And those are my two things, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilman Mendanza.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one. I was fortunate enough to join several of my colleagues up here last week at the Keaton's Child Cancer Alliance here in Roseville. They celebrated their 25th anniversary of their family-centered support office right over here off of Douglas, actually, not too far from here. And they had a nice reception and walked everybody through a lot of the outreach that they do and the differences that they make with the funds that they raise and the fundraisers and just, just the level of care and contribution to, to those people who are fighting that horrible disease and to our community over the last 25 years was, was very good to see, and we're happy to have them here in Roseville. And I know me and others wish them another 25 years and congratulate them on their 25 year anniversary. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendanza. Councilmember Albert.
Yeah, it has been pretty crazy last several weeks. One of the more fun things that I got to attend was at Sierra College, they had bot battles out there, and that's where high school and college students in robotics and engineering, it's, it's part of STEM and STEAM programs, and they compete and have their, their robots battle each other in an arena. And it's, it's excellent skill building and a great training for some of the future types of industries that we would like to attract here to the city, and also the types of industries that are starting to grow tremendously. And so it was fun watching that. And Placer Robotics runs it. If you have a student that's interested in getting into robotics, they have some excellent programs they run during the summer, and even during the school year, you could just search for Placer Robotics, P-A-R-T is part of their name. Another thing I did was fairly interesting is the Chamber CEO and I took a tour of Penumbra, one of the larger employers in the city. They're out off a foothill in one of the old HP buildings. And they came here, when they first opened, a lot of us were, a lot of staff were there at the ribbon cutting. They had, I remember, 100 employees or something. Now they're at 840 employees, and, and they said they'll be at 1,000 by the end of the year, and they're shooting for 2,000 within the next few years. So it's a big employer. And that was quite the tour. It was kind of neat to see a big, a big plant in operation, and a lot of people in our city work there and from outside our city as well. Another interesting thing was the, the first United Methodist Church, Washington and Church Street in our historic old town, they just celebrated their 140th anniversary. And Bruce and I were there, and Bonnie Gore, it was, it was a pretty special event. And they've got the cool sign, if you ever drive out there, that church is such a welcoming church, a lot of people talk about it, they just accept everybody into their fold, and it was kind of neat being there for their anniversary. You know, Bruce presented a nice present, or I forgot what it was called, but...
Proclamation.
Proclamation. Thank you very much. And, and then I know there's a lot of Easter egg hunts and things going on around the city, and I know council members are going to some of those, so a lot of places celebrating as a community. I got to attend one last weekend near my house, and there were hundreds of people out there, families, and it was just fun to watch the neighborhoods come together and have a good time together. So that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Good evening. Just a couple of things to note. Since our last meeting, I was able to meet with our assistant city attorney and assistant city manager on, with the corridor, one of the owners that has property in the corridor. I want to thank staff for setting that up. Tracy and I were, had a law and regulation meeting. Let's see, we, most of us, I believe, received a briefing from the park, recreation, and library department, which was really informational. And one of the things that was noted in that is now our police department has an opportunity to work out with an instructor from, I think they come over from Mahaney. And so yesterday morning, yesterday morning, yes, yesterday morning, I joined some of them for an early morning workout at ARPAU, which was great, and I would encourage the rest of the council if they have an opportunity to do that, or you're up early. But it just definitely shakes things up for them because they usually are on their own or in the police department, so it's a good amenity for them to have. I think that's it. I was out of town last week. This week is spring break for my kids. I'm very happy that my daughter, I was able to bribe her to join me this evening, so we'll have to maybe go to the mall or dinner after this. So that's all. Happy Easter to everyone, and we'll see you back here in a couple of weeks.
Yep, absolutely. And yeah, as Councilmember Albert mentioned, you know, he and I, Supervisor Gore, and I know Councilwoman Rucucci would have been there had she and, and her husband not been out of town for the 140th, but, you know, I, I gave him credit for the, the idea. We split the cards up between the three of us, and we had audience participation with the wherlasses, so I think they really liked that. Phoebe Astle, who is, you know, was baptized three days after she was born in the church, it happened to be Mother's Day, I mean, just great. It, it was physically at the center of, it wasn't Roseville then because it was 1883, it was probably Junctions, and it was at the fiscal center, and there's a monument marker there. But it also was at the center of caring, and I think had, for me, had a lot to do with what we have here in the city of Roseville in the way of a caring, caring community. So that was, that was very, that was very good to do. I've had an opportunity to also present certificates to the Sun City Leadership Academy, and that was before we did the groundbreaking that day. It's just great to get out and see the community. We've cut a lot of ribbons. We were all, I think a number of us were at the Take No Troop ribbon cutting at their new facility. I had a great experience just recently going to Roseville High School to speak to their Interact, their thrift, and one other club that I don't remember on the issue of homelessness. So that was just really gratifying to have that opportunity. The UCAN, the United Chamber Action Network, had a forum, the date escapes me, but recently. Senator Dolly, Senator Nilo, and Assemblyman Patterson were part of that, and Chief Bergstrom was part of a panel of law enforcement that were there on retail theft, thrift, theft, theft, not thrift. But that, that occurred that day. And then next week, on April 11th, which I think is a Tuesday, SECOG is going to do a pop-up on their, pop-up at the farmer's market from 8:30 to 11:00 to take people's comments on what the future of transportation, housing, and community should look like. So that's 8:30 to 11:00 at the, in the farmer's market there at the Fountain Shopping Center. So that's it. That's it. That's enough, right?
That's a lot.
That's enough. We're all doing, we're all doing things, and, you know, like Vice Mayor Bernascony said, wish everyone good luck, much success on their Easter egg hunting, and happy Easter to everyone. And with that, we'll be adjourned till April 19th, I think, if I may masquerade. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.